And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, we do have a regular council meeting, I'll call that to order. We do have a forum, we've got five, three, I think, Teresa, Todd, and Reggie. Uh, we do have a consent agenda tonight, treasurer's report approval of the minutes of the June 18, 2019 meeting. And we have the treasurer's report, please.
Yes, sir. July 2nd, 2019, treasurer's report, we had payable checks in the amount of $320,064.90. Uh, six of those payable checks were to major vendors in the amount of $267,430.90. Payroll for June 28, 2019, including social security and Medicare taxes, $160,655.47. Monthly bond payments, Series 1990, well, we have one, two, three, four, five bonds, the total of those five bonds are $63,694.43. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $544,414.80.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion. Ralph makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Sloan, I understood you want to make a statement or?
I'm mainly here to listen to what's going on. I'm under the pressure, you guys are looking at getting your own trucks or trash service?
We're getting ready to put a letter out, uh, for two years, and that's one of the items on the agenda. Uh, it's two years from this ordinance tonight, so it's not anytime soon.
Is that actually two years from the notice?
Pardon?
Two years from the notice.
Two years from the notice, to be technically correct.
But you sent the notice out a year ago, right?
That was a notion that we were considering it, a year ago, and now we've got to give the two-year notice by state statute to the, uh, all the contractors or whatever. Okay.
Uh, we're, we're one of the contractors, that's the only thing. We've been hauling in here, they was looking at doing commercials, I imagine, if you could.
Yes. Right now, we're doing, we contract out our residential building, charge it, and, uh, we had some, like you are, come to us last year with complaints about undercutting and, and all that kind of stuff, and, uh, that, that business now was sold that was causing that, uh, but, uh, there was some real anxiety, then some other things happened over the last year, and we decided to look at that, and, uh, the recycling and stuff on costs.
The main reason I was objecting to it is, I mean, you want to try to, and not just for us, Ziggy Mine has been here seventy years, I believe, at least.
Yeah.
And when you, when you push a small company out, I mean, you guys, if they didn't get the bid, and you let, maybe the only one would beat them would be a major company. I'm not even in the running, I'm just a small, smaller company, but that's the only thing I'm looking at, is if you have a community here. But just, I, I know you guys probably already thought of that.
Yeah, we've been through that, and, and I've discussed this with Richard, uh, he's discussed it with Jay, all that kind of stuff, and, uh, uh, there was problems with, uh, the pricing and all that kind of stuff, and the undercutting and causing all that stuff, and then, uh, once the initial contract got over, then that same company would raise the price significantly, you're probably aware of all, how that goes.
I, I understand, I'm just opposed.
Okay.
And I, I, I agree with you on that part, but.
Now, we were looking at buying trucks, I'll be honest with you, uh, we still are, uh, looking at buying front-load, uh, commercial-type trucks.
To do Fort Wood and stuff.
Well, we're not doing Fort Wood, we didn't, us or Waynesville bid that contract, we either one of them got it. Okay? That's already been announced, and it did not, it stayed with Six Nations, so, uh, so that, uh, has not. But two years from now, whether we contract it out, or we do it ourselves, uh, and there's some economics that's involved in that, I'd be glad to share with you offline. But the, the transfer station is not a big money maker, okay? Uh, like, when someone was bringing some, uh, foam and stuff, it was costing us money to take it to the landfill.
I understand that, but.
Okay. Yeah, it's a question of economics. And every eighteen months, our landfill prices go up, and you know the transfer station tipping fee has remained at $50 forever and ever. And if we go up, then we're competing with raw oil money. And, and then we, we kind of vote everybody off the island because they go where it's cheapest, right?
Yeah, and, and that or somebody else plus another transfer station.
Well, that's a difficult process to do, yeah.
Well, I'm not saying me, I go to the, to the, to the big company, that's the only thing, you can keep the low, keep the community, the people that are spending money in your community not talking about me, I, I mean, you think about how many people Ziggy Mine has working for him, when you bring the big companies in, which if the city took it, then that would be a difference.
Yeah, but I've talked directly with Ziggy Mine, so I know his feelings, so, okay.
But you make me feel better, and I'm glad, because I mean, speak my feelings on it.
I'm pretty, you know, I, I can give you numbers, they're all public numbers, I can, I can show you what we make over there, I can show you what the costs are, and, and why. I'm thinking we need to get in there because we're not being fair to our businesses, uh, with the competition that's going on, but, you know, and I think we can do it at a much lower price, uh, and, and, you know, uh, support the transfer station, so at some point, we're going to be losing money.
When the city brings it in, will you lose the, will you lose the trash that's being hauled into the city transfer station for the surrounding community?
We're getting from a thirteen-counting area right now. So, yeah, and, and we've even been approached to bid at some of those local cities, but we're not in that business, that, that's what you. Yeah, we, we got calls to bid, but.
I said it right there.
Yeah, and we're not doing that. And I told the mayor that.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. You done? I've known Shelley a long, long time.
She was planning on getting here, but she.
Oh, yeah? Tried to twist my arm.
No, she just, she's like me, she just wanted to hear what, it's better to get it from your word here than.
And we're live five, so.
Yeah, well, I'm hearing from Ivy, or from Wayne's, people in Waynesville and everywhere else, and this is why I'm hearing it directly from you guys, it's the proof.
That's good, yeah. Well, thanks for talking. Okay, first new business, getting into alcohol. We have a, yes. Okay, Rita, go ahead.
Mayor, have Ms. Amina with us, if you can stand up, Ms. Amina. Amina's our physical worker we have for the summer, she has taken on, uh, jobs of redoing our business showcase and taking new pictures, contacting the businesses we don't have, she has taken on the scanning to go into Laserfish for, for utility billing, and she's just taken on a lot of projects we would never get to, uh, and we sure appreciate her, and she's real sweet and has a good attitude about it, so. Thank you, Ms. Amina.
Especially your mother, because, you know, the kids I saw, but you've all grown up, and, uh, they went to Partridge every year, so, and through the whole school district, so. I'm glad they turned out good.
Yeah, 'cause if they hadn't, they could have blamed it on you, but, yeah. Yeah, those teachers, they didn't teach us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got 3.1 as a request for liquor license for the theme Taco Innovations, which is really Taco 66, I believe.
Route 66 Taco Company.
Well, they got all kinds of technical names, but.
Uh, we got the application, a copy of the application in front of me.
Yeah.
John Randall, he's the old manager of the, um, company.
And I'm listening to 3.1.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Oh, that's the liquor license, actually.
It's this.
Oh, okay.
It's the liquor license, I, we, the, the, Tom, for information on it.
Okay.
Okay. They require for a liquor by the drink to include Sunday sales, uh, all the regulatory departments, the fire department, the police department, and the building department have approved, and the location for this business is 946 Missouri Avenue, Suite 1. And Curtis is here, if you wanted to ask him any questions.
What do you think, James, did the background check?
Yes, sir, I did the background check on him, I reviewed it today, there was nothing on there that would alarm me. Uh, I also went to business just to make sure that that John Randall was who I thought it was, it was, he's been in our community for, uh, easily probably two decades. Uh, never had any problems with him, I think he'll make a fine restaurant owner.
Okay. Okay. So, do I get a motion to approve the liquor license for Fusion Taco Innovations, I'll see.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, John seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes, yes, yes.
3.2, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the state aviation trust fund project consultant agreement between the city of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Burns McDonald Engineering Company. Basically, this is submitting for a, uh, military aviation program, uh, to get, uh, funding to do a, uh, master plan and preliminary work on the terminal, the new terminal. Uh, so we have to approve this, uh, to go forward, Waynesville's already approved it, or getting ready to approve it, I guess, uh, next week, so.
So this is just for like an architect company to?
Yeah, it's a engineering firm. You know, it's the new, uh, Burns and McDonald that we hired, uh, this is their first project, so we're getting them under contract to do that master plan. Uh, there's a runway, possible extension they're going to review, and some other stuff in there, so, okay? Rita's bill, please.
Bill number 19070, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the state aviation trust fund project consultant agreement between the city of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated.
Got a motion on the first reading?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
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 Got a second reading, please?
Bill number 19070, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the state aviation trust fund project consultant agreement between the city of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated.
Got a motion on the second reading?
Yes.
Walter makes a motion?
Second.
Uh, who's that? Mi- Michael? Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Sidemen?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Rita's in ordinance place?
Bill number 3397, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the state aviation trust fund project consultant agreement between the city of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, 3.3 as an ordinance of mending, uh, so the ordinance, 225.500 of the city, St. Robert city code, Rita?
This is cleaned up, um, you guys swam last, some ordinance that we had previously, we're not a Red Cross facility, the closest one is Joplin, and our ordinance called for, which we did have a, a WSI instructor, but, um, we're not required to have that, and our instructor, or like ours, have been trained to give the classes, so, um, that language is cleaned up.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Rita's a bill, please.
Bill number 19071, ordinance mending number 225500.
Got a motion on the first reading?
Yes, sir.
John makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, second reading, please.
Bill number 19071, ordinance mending 225500 of St. Robert city code.
Got a motion on the second reading?
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Linda seconds?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, is, is this section two fourteen what it's going to read, or what it reads now?
It's what it reads now.
Oh, that's what it, okay.
Okay, 'cause we don't have a park superintendent, right?
Right.
And it says park superintendent there, does the new one say park superintendent?
But we do what?
Yeah, I think this is what the new.
This is the new language, and the only thing we took out one sentence.
We don't have a hired person, no.
I thought we changed it to some other title.
No, we moved it to park superintendent.
We took out one sentence that said Red Cross certified.
Okay, no, I just thought we changed the title of the park, person in charge of the parks, I thought we changed it to something besides park supervisor.
It's park superintendent is what we call ours, and by the man in charge, it's not park director.
Okay.
Okay.
I know we changed it to something not long ago, and I couldn't remember.
So there's your second, Phil stands?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Bill number 19071, ordinance mending 225500 of St. Robert city code.
Got a motion on the second reading? John makes a motion, Michael second, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Susan?
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, Rita's in ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3398, an ordinance mending 225500 of St. Robert city code.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Linda?
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
3.4, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the agreement relating to annexation of property between city of, the, we're not ready.
We're not ready for this, we haven't.
That's agreement.
Right.
To execute the agreement relating to annexation, okay, that would be good, between city of St. Robert, so we're just doing the agreement for them to annex.
And then we'll do it in the paper for fourteen days, and then we'll have a, 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 and then come before the council.
Yeah, this is the agreement relating to the.
They have to volunteer, too.
They did, they've already brought it over.
We got it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, Rita's a bill, please.
Bill number 19072, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the agreement relating to the annexation of property between city of St. Robert and Marin-Antivestor.
Got a motion on the first reading?
Motion.
John makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Second reading, please?
Bill number 19072, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the agreement relating to annexation of property between city of St. Robert and Marin-Antivestor.
Got a motion on the second reading?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rita's in ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3399, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute the agreement relating to annexation of property between the city of St. Robert and Marin-Antivestor.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance, Walter makes a motion, Michael second, clarification discussion, call the roll.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Glad you're there. 3.5, ordinance approving purchase of fencing from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the city's property on Plattner Avenue, and that's two different projects, it's for the firefighting training area, and also the, uh, dog park fencing, which is four foot tall.
Yay!
Okay, I had to make that decision, Linda kicked me in the shin, I'm still living. Okay, Rita's a bill, please.
Bill number 19073, ordinance approving purchase of fencing from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the city's property on Plattner Avenue.
Got a motion on the first reading?
Yes, sir.
Linda makes a motion, Michael second, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Yes. Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
This is for the people, I guess, uh, looking in, uh, behind big old tires, we're going to do a six-foot fence with slats for privacy, that will come and connect to the back fence back there, then the fire department will put a Conex, one of those full-size forty-foot Conexes, little cut doors and a roof and all that stuff, and use it for firefighting and smoke it out and all that kind of stuff. And then down below that, there'll be a two-hundred by two-hundred, uh, fenced-in area, four foot tall, uh, to take your dog in there and let them run free, there'll be a water spigot in there, uh, and some other stuff, Steve's, uh, ordering the plastic baggie thing and all that stuff so that they can clean up after themselves, and of course, we'll do things like spraying for ticks, uh, and that type of stuff, and, and make sure the grass stays good in there, so that they don't get in a lot of mud, so. And it, it looks like it should drain pretty well.
Otherwise, you've got some wet dog.
Steve, did you have anything you want to add to that dog park thing? Okay, second reading.
Bill number 19073, ordinance approving purchase of fencing from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the city's property on Plattner Avenue.
Before I ask for a motion again, uh, Steve was saying that there's a lot of sunlight over there now. Got a motion on the second reading? Make some noise, we'll hit a second, Susan seconds?
Yes.
Clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Rita's in ordinance, please.
Bill number 33400, ordinance approving purchase of fencing from Mid Missouri Fence Company for the city's property on Plattner Avenue.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance, Michael makes a motion, Walter second, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Wait for it, before you go, go, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I thought we were waiting on the motion.
Okay, so the next one is 3.6, ordinance determining, determined, or determining that the city of St. Robert shall begin providing commercial trust of, and authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to take all actions necessary to comply with statutory requirements. That's 3.6. Okay. And I think we ought to kind of discuss that anyway. Okay, Rita's a bill, please.
Bill number 19074, ordinance determining the city of St. Robert shall begin providing commercial service, trash services, and authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to take all actions necessary to comply with statutory requirements.
Which is the two-year time requirement and notification to all the, the contractors. Uh, got a motion on the first reading?
Yes, sir.
John makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
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 Okay, second reading?
Bill number 19074, ordinance determining the city of St. Robert shall begin providing commercial trash services, authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to take all actions necessary to comply with statutory requirements.
Got a motion on the second reading, Walter makes a motion?
Second.
Susan seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Rita's in ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3401, ordinance determining that the city of St. Robert shall begin providing commercial trash services and authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to take all actions necessary to comply with statutory requirements.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance, Walter makes a motion, John second, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, 3.7, ordinance approving the purchase of a Delbra, whatever, basically a roll-on-roll-off truck to haul our recycling.
For the recycling, what do you mean?
Yeah, for the recycling.
Bill number 19075, ordinance approving purchase of a Delbra, 10174, sixty thousand, inside-outside rail roll-off hoist, and two thou, uh, 2020 freightliner truck with 114 SD chassis for the public transportation.
Got a motion on the first reading, Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Um, I thought we were, um, I have questions about it.
Okay, what's your question? This is to haul those big, uh, containers that we normally get a contractor to haul, it costs a hundred and fifty up there, we usually get about a hundred and thirty for what's in there, so it's costing us money to, uh, to haul it. And we can have the truck do double duty.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Call the roll.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, second reading?
Bill number 19075, an ordinance approving the purchase of a Delbra, 10174, sixty thousand, inside-outside rail roll-off hoist and 2020 freightliner truck with 114 SD chassis for the public transportation.
Got a motion on the second reading, Michael makes a motion? Walter seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
I still have a question. I thought, when we talked about this last time, purchasing it, I thought it was to be prepared in case we got the four-lumbered woods.
Not for the recycling.
Okay.
The, the trash front motor, trash work.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not doing that.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Rita's in ordinance?
Bill number 2402, an ordinance approving the purchase of a Delbra, 10174, sixty thousand, inside-outside rail roll-off hoist, and 2020 freightliner truck with 114 SD chassis for the public transportation.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll, please.
Sidemen?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Next committee meeting is Wage Finance, we're going to meet one probably about a week before the next council meeting to go over the mid-year adjustments. So the next council meeting is in August.
How come we're not having one this week?
We have one in July.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. Because everybody wants to go on vacation.
What?
You're not going?
I'm not going on vacation, I'm showing up for council.
Six of August, so we need one.
You and me.
All right.
Yeah, so what's the last? Tuesday and July?
The 30th.
30th, so let's set one up for the 30th of July.
October?
Yeah. Public Works, Steve, anything?
Do you want to hear?
Meetings.
Need for the meetings?
Yeah, no, nothing. Okay, Emergency Services, Chief left, both chiefs, Park Committee met last night, so I don't know if we got a new date.
Hey, I'm, uh, in the first month of the month.
First month of the month, but I don't think we should have, have to have one for a month or so.
Well, I think Gene's wanting her and his KCB staff to meet once a month.
Oh, okay.
Want to kind of tell the audience what the, what you're working on?
Oh, we're, we're working on becoming a, a member of the Kansas City Barbecue Association, I don't know if that's the exact name, Society. And we will actually become a point place for people from the Kansas City Barbecue Society, who they have to get so many points to qualify to go to the big barbecue contest, and this will be a place they can come to our barbecue contest and get one of those points. So it should attract quite a few people, and, and, um, our prizes will go up, everything will be, it'll be bigger, it'll be much bigger than it was last year. We're going to have additional things, we're going to try and have things for kids, uh.
Band on Friday night.
Maybe get a band on Friday night, or something like that, we want to work it up really big and get it to be a major activity in the city.
But the judging here then will go on to a national competition.
Right, right, it'll be the Jack Daniels National Cook-Off, the Crown Royal.
Royal Oaks.
Yeah, Royal.
Royal Oaks.
Yeah, that one. But this will be a points place, so she said we would probably get people from Arkansas, Oklahoma, um, you know, on the ground, just to.
Yeah, we have to put in a RV dump station up there, because that's one of the requirements, Steve's got that kind of.
And Jean counted, we could put in thirty-one campers by the size that we have to do, and, uh.
With a generator.
With a generator, he could put in ten more places.
Fifty, yeah, I thought he said fifty, but what, what they, what we will need eventually is we have to train people to be judges.
And we're having our own judges.
And we're going to have our own class to teach people how to be a judge. And we're gonna have our own class to teach people how to be a judge at a barbecue event.
So if there's anybody out there in the audience, could you hold the window?
No, Anita, I need a, we have, we have to have at least twenty-four people for them to have a class, so.
Okay.
You know, might as well open it to the community.
So we'll probably be advertising that prior.
They said, she told me in the next couple of weeks they'll get it on their website about us having a judging class, and when the class fills up, and she'll call me and we'll pick a date.
Okay.
To have it, um, and I have.
But the judges can then travel and get paid to travel and all that kind of stuff, so it's a pretty neat thing if somebody wants to really get into that. Okay, okay, thank you. Comments by the older men, John, you wanna start this week?
I have nothing to start with, so I have no comments.
So you don't have anything to end with?
Well, that's, that's not the yard of the month thing. I mean, I appreciate someone noticing our yard this week.
It was all over Facebook.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
It looked, pictures looked pretty familiar to me.
Probably remember doing it, huh? Michael?
Nothing.
Glad you got that chimp in your back, it probably helped.
Yeah. Actually does most of that, not me.
Yes, sir, we'll continue to work on a chimney project out there, we're trying to beautify the area, but I'm aware of the fact that we're primarily men who are from Mars, so if anybody wanna offer something to enhance it, we don't know much about making beauty, we just know how to observe beauty, so if you could help us out, please, we'd appreciate anyone.
There is a master garden type organization.
There, I'll put that in the paper.
Yeah, we, we, matter of fact, we had some volunteer work from the master garden, they got us that for.
I think Tyce just volunteered caring.
Oh, okay, wonderful, wonderful. We have a legal booty then.
I'm not actually involved with them anymore, but I do know who they are.
Yes.
It's gonna be a garden club. There's a garden club and master gardeners.
Yeah, well, we had two young ladies to work with us here, um, I would forget their names, but then again, I'm a senior citizen, but just keep that in mind, but they're wonderful ladies that have been working from that club.
Yeah.
With us, so, uh, please, so it's, we're trying.
It might have been the garden club.
Yes, ma'am.
They tend to do things that have memorial-type.
I just, I just know that if they were private, you'd love to have them in your platoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good folks.
But the, what is it, Veterans Day, they're gonna have the flags out there from.
Yes.
The armed services.
That's right.
All that stuff, so it'll be highlighted. Okay, Linda?
I know you hate to ask me if I've done anything.
Okay, moving right on.
Steve! All kidding aside, I do think there needs to be some more dirt thrown down there in that dog park to kind of level it off just a little bit.
Yeah, we've already, have that scheduled, we just don't have equipment.
Yeah, there was a couple of trees we had to move first.
Yeah.
And there's a really big branch hanging out of one of those trees, let's not cut the tree down, but could we pull that dead branch out of the tree, it's hanging like, vertical?
We're still not down over there, we have to actually get back in there and finish up a few things.
They got a dig for the water line and all that kind of stuff.
Don't need to chain yourself to the tree, just.
That's all.
But I keep my eye high on the mayor.
Susan, anything?
No, but I have a question, um, I wanted to clarify when the dates for setting off fireworks ended, it was, is that July sixth?
The fifth of July, at eleven o'clock.
Fifth of July, and they can shoot off fireworks from eight in the morning until eleven at night, is that correct?
Yes.
I think our ordinance says the eighth of July.
Thought it was the fifth.
I just looked at it the other day because somebody was shooting off fireworks already.
We can go right up there.
Someone might be asking, you want me to go get it?
I know it was longer than I thought it should be.
That's why it's asking, that wasn't.
Yeah, I thought it was the fifth, it's usually the day after.
I thought it was the fifth.
It's longer than that, because remember those people wanted, um, they came in and got us to extend the selling of the fireworks too?
Yeah, yeah, the twentieth, the, I think the selling goes to the eighth, but I think the actual firing of.
I looked the other night, 'cause somebody was shooting them off.
Edna, what do you got? Comments by the administration?
Okay. One, one, one. I think I have, just a little bit, reported taxable sales due today in the city of St. Robert is a hundred and forty-four million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Okay.
Uh, three point eight percent increase over twenty-eight.
So we're down, we were at seven percent.
Correct.
So we came down.
Yes, yes, about.
Still about four.
But we're still at two thousand and eighteen. Also, it's fine, um, E-bill customers, we have about thirty-eight percent of our customers that receive their bills electronically, which is a good thing, cutting down on papers and cutting down trees, Linda.
I know.
Right. That's about nine hundred and forty-two customers receive their bills electronically.
Okay.
Also, this month's disconnect date for non-payment will be July the ninth, and the balance in the operating account is two million, four hundred, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, after the payment today, today's the old and easy.
And Steve, public works?
Just a few things to pass on here, um, over the weekend of the twenty-ninth, um, we had several wells go down due to the storms that rolled through. The wells, wells number six and two was able to be reset and they come back on without any troubles. Well four at the Cracker Barrel area, it had a, burnt the motor up in it and also burned up the, the radio for the SCADA system, so we had to actually have that well pulled and replaced, so they, they came in just a few days later, got it back online, so it was, wasn't without it for very long, which is a, a good point there. Uh, the Carter Street paving is complete and they are over on lavender laying now, I think it's about half, uh, complete on lavender, so that, I think they'll have it finished up by tomorrow. The road construction by the Aquatic Center, excuse me, is, uh, still ongoing, um, we've got a few more trucks hauling over there now, so it's filling up fast and hopefully we'll be done with it here in the next week or, or so. And then, uh, the only other project was the electric pole changeout project and it's, it's moving along as to be expected. Uh, the Superior Road Water Tower, it has been tested three times consecutively and passed all three times, so today, um, oh, probably around two o'clock, we turn it back into the system, so we'll continue monitoring that and, and sampling and, uh, keep your fingers crossed, hopefully we got, got going.
Got it fixed, okay.
That's all I got.
Grass coming, uh, the areas around the city look good, they're really getting out and doing a good job, and I know Public Works has been very busy, especially in this heat, and appreciate it, thanks, pass that along.
Thank you.
Fireworks is the fifth of July to shoot, and the selling is the tenth of July.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so yeah, it's eleven o'clock on the fifth, and you can shoot.
No, it's all later in July or something.
Clarification, so those in the audience, five July, eleven o'clock is cutoff for shooting, and then the tenth, they can continue to buy till.
We posted it on Facebook so people would know.
Okay. God, Colton's all, Jay, you was moving already, weren't you?
Good evening, um, excuse me, ten inch for June was three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three point.
Didn't make it to four thousand, huh?
Not quite. Uh, the garage door, front garage door at our building, the motor quit this morning about six feet up, we raised it by hand, um, overhead door.
Oh, no, you didn't raise it by hand, you probably used, probably used the loader, didn't you?
No, we, we have a, it's just a chain, it's at the.
Oh, okay.
By hand, it's a bypass, but we couldn't get the motor worked, we had the electric department over and look at it, and they couldn't see anything on, uh, the old one had a reset button on the side when it would trip like that, but we couldn't find one on this one. So our head door's supposed to be down in the morning to find out what's wrong with it and take it away, but we manually opened it and closed it, today we'll do the same thing in the morning, so. And then the other thing I have is, uh, we will be open on the Friday, this Friday, the fifth.
You want me to come visit?
If you want, I'm always ready. So, uh, but other than that, that's all I have right now.
Okay. When are we gonna have that one trailer that's gotta get out and get repaired?
Uh, it'll be next week before, uh, Springfield Tread is ready for it, they said they would call me when it.
Okay, so you coordinated it, 'cause our guys will pull it down with the tractor.
Yeah, they just, they, they don't have room on their lot far right now, they told me they'll come another day before they were ready for it, so.
Jay, there is no place for people to get rid of TVs right now, is there, until you have your next special pickup?
No.
Well, we take them all the time, but there's a, if it's the old style with the glass screen, there's a forty-dollar charge for it.
Even those humongous ones?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to know.
They, uh, they're wet, they have a wet contaminant in them.
Yeah, the senior center has one in the basement we need to get rid of, so.
Now, if you wait till the pickup and then there's a grant that supplements that, and it's like ten dollars, right?
Yeah, I think it's twenty this year.
Twenty this year, okay.
Oh, forty's not that bad, if we can get somebody bring it over there, well, you will take them, we just have to pay forty dollars. Oh, okay, that's good to know.
Okay. What's the charge on a flat screen?
Uh, there's no charge, we just recycle it.
Okay.
If it's a, is it a projection TV?
Yeah, it's one of those big honker.
There's no charge for that, as long as the screen is not glass, uh, there's no charge.
It's one of those big, great big things that they first came out with, you know, the back of it sticks out about this far, and it's got a tube, a, a light in it that has, you know, that projects the.
Right, yeah, yeah, that, that's, you just bring it in, there's no charge for that.
Oh, that's even better news.
Just 'cause you're on the council.
That, that's not curious, that's hard to break.
I know. He just likes to give me a hard time.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks for clearing that up, though, I didn't know that you took those others.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Tyce?
I got some stuff to close, but I don't think, anything for you guys to carry.
Anita?